You gotta get. Come down, yeah.
Oh wow. I promise. In the long run, you have to go for a hundred and fifty pounds of water in slava.
Well, I'm worried now, so.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Excuse me. When you started recording, I couldn't hear anymore.
Oh, well, let me just make sure you're not muted.
Probably because we all got real quiet.
Oh, maybe that's it. You were so quiet.
That's what it is. Yeah, that's exactly it.
Okay, I'll go back to.
I don't have you muted, Miriam. You're good.
Okay, six o'clock. You will call meeting order. You rise before we leave. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic, which is the Canada, one nation, under God, with no flaws. So when you want me to know, I guess we can call this order twice, or is that the? We have the rule, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now we need to approve tonight's agenda.
Including.
Including, yes, excuse me, this invoice for the bill batch. Team Lab.
Once we get into the consent agenda, I have to be that, and so that I read G.
Very good.
Some motion to. Approve the agenda along with. This G. Uh, PG?
Yeah.
Yep, the invoice that will go under the consent agenda, yes.
One second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed, in none passes, all items on the consent agenda will pass one, once a motion. Unless someone has something they would like to pull out, we will discuss separately. Yeah, I need a motion to approve the second agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
And the second? All second best. Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Consent agenda. Uh, anyone for the Black Book Forum? No one. No. We will move on to, uh. Many reports. And staff. Mike.
Not a whole lot. Nothing real major report, you know, business as usual, trying to take care of campground, wastewater ponds, city stuff like always. Had a. Chemical pump go down in the water plant, luckily we caught it right away due to our, you know, weekly testing of chemical stuff, we caught it and didn't get that. Rebuilt with some parts and. Yeah, we're just. Trying to keep up with everything right now. Anything for me from anybody?
Our location still.
I talked to Tyne actually on Friday. And didn't really get a clear answer of when they'll be around here. It's still holding and doing its thing. It's. You know, I haven't seen any major pressure loss or anything at this point, so still just. Waiting on their, their timeframe. They've had. Problems just like we have with, you know, getting materials and then being backed up. In fact, they tried to. Order some street paint the other day again for marking around town and I can't even get any. So they don't even know when they're gonna be able to make it because they can't get stuff to make it, so. We're still, still dealing with supply chain issues on some things. Other than that. I'm trucking along.
And the staff will still be out.
Yes, I have an employee that's been out due to a work-related injury. He'll be out until. Mid-September for sure. So I've been. Hampering a lot of our projects that we were hoping to do. We just don't have a staff currently to. Do a whole lot of stuff.
All parts look good.
I'm trying to keep up with it. I'm, I'm waiting for grass to stop growing.
This, this year we're not, we're not getting.
No, not like last year.
About that tree?
The tree at the wayside, yeah, yes, has had a split in it for many, many years from what I was told by staff. We're gonna put a band on it. Because I think that that tree eventually has been split for over a decade. I think it deserves to stay standing, so we're gonna, we're gonna band it and keep the other.
Anything else for Mike? Not immediately.
Thank you.
Sonda.
Yes. Stupended. Good, I'm good, um, well, you compliments on. Weekly and daily specials. Lots of good feedback on quality and. Our burgers and food and everything. There is. Getting better and better at communicating, so. Had a nice comment about a guy who, I've worked in this town, I didn't know you guys had a bar here. He goes, I saw a burger on your sign. I'm like. Okay. You guys have burgers here. Well, yeah, yeah, we do. Not for a long, long time. But, yeah. This.
Good.
How's it going with the hours? How's it going with the scaffers there? It's, it's going. Um, there's gonna be obviously some. There was some people. Done about that. Um. We're always working hard. Customers don't notice, you know. But yeah, having done, we're doing staff payroll hours quite a bit.
I made a significant. Impact on just the staff payroll.
Yep. The hours, which is. So we've already done that. We already, and that was before, obviously.
Before, obviously, we started, yep. You know, I mean, yeah. Excuse me.
I was opening an hour later, is that?
Well, well.
Actually, thank.
It's hard, it's hard for, it's hard to get used to.
Well, yeah, but yeah.
I mean, as far as, as far as the impact on the customers, there really isn't any on Friday and Saturdays, and we still open at ten. Because those are our Bloody Mary mornings. Right? So. Still keeping that. Yeah, you know, in the, on those days in the morning, there is. You know, history of having sales, you know, splitting amount of sales. So, but as far as the Monday through Wednesday, um, he chose to open later an hour pushing. Um, they kind of peoples hours back so they come and cover supper. Their biome, let's say on the bar side. You know, two people, like, four people.
The result, set for the bash?
As much as you can be. It should be interesting, but we'll see.
Catering's going good?
It is, went away. It was. Very, yeah, it was very good for us. Coming back, I mean, uh. With COVID, honestly affecting Stacey and other places, we, we were, you know, putting in a position to do like seven weddings in twenty twenty. And we had one in twenty twenty-one. Gonna probably have three of them this year, and so hopefully that, you know. The trend goes back. I mean, a lot of people. From cities or whatever. Are coming, we're all gonna go, we're all gonna be together. Which is hard for us to understand that that is something out of state or, you know, out of areas, mental thing is different than here, you know.
And your website too, is that? I, I can't check everybody's, I, I try to keep up on all these new websites that were the same as, but.
Right.
It's impossible.
Right, um. I did take some web printing, so I've been able to update things on there. Um, we will be. I'm adding more pictures and painting and stuff up. And I did, I was in contact with our new contact. Um, we updated some of our, you know, opening hours, some of our. We did some price adjusting, nothing crazy, but just. I mean, everything costs more. Everything. Everything, every single thing you do. So, trying. Make up that, but not. Price yourselves out of the competition either, so.
Obviously. Anything else for Sonda? I don't, I don't have anything, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. The fire department?
Um, all I have for the board is to recognize that the eighteenth will be the. Annual budget meeting for the fair protection for the townships and cities. Um, I don't have the packet ready, so I'll provide it to the board on prior to, by email. Because the next time we use the twenty seconds, we will already go past, but if there's board representation that wants to be present at that meeting, you're welcome to. It's here at six o'clock. That rings.
Jump over somebody's car, upside down.
And now, the golf course.
Um. Just been busy out there. Um, staff has been busy. Uh, we're starting to lose some staff now and going back to college and things like that, but going through covering, um, good comments. Uh, greens are impeccable. The greens are in great shape this year. Um, Dick McKean has been keeping them. Spotless in the products on like we need to and. Irrigation system is working like it's supposed to be, so that's running every single night like it's supposed to be.
Oh my gosh, that's awesome.
Running like it's supposed to be. Um, it's starting to dry a little bit now, some of the rocks and stuff like that, but, um, the new morgue is working well, and that's cutting back on a ton of time. Um, clubhouse has been busy. Uh, the new snack shack is getting built if we drove by, um, on hole five. Uh, Northwood's long ago, we had staff that are sponsoring it, so. So that will be available for tournaments and things like that instead of doing beverage cart. And we did, we drew a little. Soft opening on Saturday. We had a thirty-one people tournament and used it. And I think they sold a hundred and fifty dollars out of it that day, so. So a little add-on. There's no electricity out in my shop though, like. There will be, yeah. We do have electricity in that area, but I'll have to call, um, and have it trenched in to add a line, so is it coming from the well? Yeah, it will.
Cool.
I mean, technically I could run an extension cord, a long one, because we do have an outside outlet that used to be a pot machine. Right, technically I could run a very long extension cord, but they kind of switched the location of it. Um, I thought it was a little closer. But we want to make sure that we're in the protection of the trees for when the men's tee off box comes in. You know, there's no window on that side for, so they're not hitting it with balls. And it's super cute, if you get a chance to do that. They just did such a great job. It's just adorable, so that looks really nice. And it's built unlocked. It's not, not in the ground or anything, so.
Excellent.
Yeah. It's good for everybody this, this goes to maybe July.
We all have your report. The name of the bonds.
Wow. Requisition for some. Magnifying glasses?
Or an eleven by seventeen, right?
Yeah.
But on a whole, Misty, how do you feel about your first year? This is, you're starting to come into the. The end of it. Do you see a light at the end of the tunnel, or is there a?
It's definitely more than I thought it was going to be like for me personally.
Okay.
Um. Working my tail feathers off. I'm there every day, all day long, weekends. So, I mean, I've been there a lot. And trying to do the clubhouse and also doing the greens. But I think it's all, it's kind of good that I'm doing both, two districts, I'm learning both, but, um. The numbers don't look great. I'm not super impressed with that, but I think just because of like a lot of like rebuilding things, like trying to turn things around, you know? But, I, I mean, obviously, I'm not, I, I don't hear a lot of complaints. I think I would tell you if I did. I mean, honestly, I think since I've been there, I've had. Like one group mad and leave because they happened to come at the same time as everybody else. They couldn't get a cart. Um, and that was the same day as Woodcarver's Festival. We were that busy that we had all the carts out that day. And I wish I would have been there because I wasn't at that moment. I could have said, you know, if you just wait twenty minutes, like, you know. They would have gotten out, but otherwise, honestly, for me, I haven't heard anything for negativity. Um, people come in with comments and suggestions all the time, and I appreciate it, and we try to attack anything that they say, like. By trimming a tree or by winding some fairways, it's things that haven't been addressed in so many years that. I just listen and I absorb everything that they're saying and things like that, because they're the ones that are out there so much, and so. We've widened the fairway some areas, like I said, the greens are in excellent shape. I mean, Dick is doing such a great job with them. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get too down on the numbers too. I mean, if you are doing it by this report, green fees and cart rental, one of the things you have to look overall is that the revenues themselves. Are higher, but Misty's had tournaments and we're doing it under turnover revenue, so a lot of that isn't being dealt into those individual department numbers. So you might not see a reflection of any grease on green fees and cart rentals, but that's a really, really. Because they're not going in green fees.
Yeah, they're just not.
Program, we don't put it in in green fees. It comes in as a lump sum in, in the event. So, yeah, like that, we just said that one you had on Saturday was a seven hundred and forty dollar tournament, so, yeah. It was seven hundred and forty dollars in, in terms, that was their cart and their green feed. And before they even left the clubhouse, they had spent seven hundred and thirty-two dollars on, um, years ago. So, I mean, if, if that kind of rhythm just keeps up. You know, and I just keep, you know, turning out the product like we have been, I think it's, you know. It's gonna be good. People are really, you know. We come in and make good content. I'm still today, oh, you changed it around, so I'm still getting people that are coming in that haven't seen, you know, the change in the clubhouse and things like that, so.
Yeah, it's going to take more than, you know, one summer.
Yeah, I know, but you know how I operate. I'm like. Hmm, um, tons of great comments about our carts. I didn't realize how nice our carts were. I only normally drive the army electric ones, and, you know, now that we've been so busy, I did give a couple green carts out, and it's just night and day. Um, some members went golfing somewhere else, came back and said, your carts are so nice. So we just, we really are starting to do the quality things out there. That's what it was missing for so long, is the quality. But. I saw, probably not go down across the whole city too, like one, in one unit, you make it one area, makes everything else better to units. Uh, there's so much stuff going on around the community that everything is. It is. Reaping rewards from the visitors. One thing's there. Yeah, and most of like, I would say. Over half of my people that come in are tourists. So I mean, most people in there, I'm asking them. You know, who are you? Where are you from? Where are you staying? I mean, it's, it's mostly tourism.
And that software really is making a. Huge.
I wouldn't know how to operate without it, to be honest with you. I am so thankful that we did that because. Everyone has caught on to it now, and it just does, it breaks everything down so nice, and. It's just, you know, you can start tabs if people want to go golf and come back and have a pizza or do something like that. You can start on a tab, and it's just so modern that it's. I, I couldn't imagine not having it, going back to the register with the, you know, you gave with something. That would not be a thing, so. So, yeah, everything's. Good. I mean, we, I mean, actually, they don't allow them to, but like, everything's working. How? That took a while. That was a nightmare. I mean.
Yeah, well.
And it's hard because like right now. Um, we have Tony on vacation, and I, it's literally, um, Kyla, she's by herself. She's been by herself out there for two weeks, and we have eight coming in more on Wednesday. By the way, she's doing the whole entire thing herself. So she, the other day, Illinois went out on the golf cart. We went and got the. Book and we pulled up a YouTube video and we changed this Illinois, and you know, so she's just. You know. Just figured out, uh, kudos to this guy behind me because she's got his number now, so you know, I would have made a few mistakes. I would have, I would have made some mistakes and I would have called somebody to come in. I'm not a mechanic, and we don't have anybody there that has those mechanical skills, you know, so when something breaks down, we all go. Uh, I don't know, you know, and it's amazing. He'll come in and look at it and within minutes, and it's fixed, and it would have cost me.
Sure.
Hundreds of dollars if I would have called somebody to come out there, so that's been a lifesaver because we just really don't have a handyman per se on grounds at all. You know, so. And that makes it difficult because I'm just constantly, you know, YouTube-ing and Googling and making phone calls, trying to figure out how to, how to fix a valve on irrigation system, and you know, me, Mike and I, and. Everything else, we really are just kicking them all around, so. But it's going. I mean, they, like I said, thanks, thanks for him for dropping things and coming to us when he comes along.
Is there any specific members on the last grill and chill? Is that successful?
It was successful. I don't remember. I had sixty-four people. I charged twelve dollars a plate instead of free will donations because the one free will donation kind of went backwards on me. So I had sixty-four people for the grill and chill. Um. My beer sales were. High. I had forty people upstairs for a groomsmen dinner that night, and I had ninety-two rounds of golf that day. So that was a four thousand and twenty-dollar day. And so for us, for me, I was like, woo, you know, like.
That was the funny part of Windcarvers, right?
I just, okay, yeah. So.
It stopped at the grocery store.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, that's nice too, and that's the thing I'm trying to push more, that, um, the groomsmen dinner upstairs, they came up and they decorated it, they catered it in, and it looked. Phenomenal, like they just really did a good job, and that's the thing I need to try and push more to, is get more people to want to use the upstairs for their events, but. Yeah, so the grill and chill has definitely been positive. I do see like reoccurring people, Deer would make him instead of a booth that night, and that brought their employees, so they brought all their employees out and paid for their meal, and they did some giveaways, they did cornhole boards. And so it's been super well received, and it was lovely to keep seeing that, so, especially with the sponsors want to come into booths, and things like that's good for them too, so. It's kind of more of a hub.
I think it's good that you're charging a flat fee though, rather than.
Yeah.
Free wills.
And you know, that.
Everybody wants as pretty as.
But you know, that worked really well for me, and then I just had one particular night that. Um, big families came in with kids and things like that, so that it didn't, you know, fan out, but. So I think I'll probably keep putting a fee on it now that it's kind of, kind of rhythm, so. And the meal was great. Loved it, it was delicious, yeah. Oh. Other than that.
So.
I know, but I feel, I feel I'm indifferent on that, because I'm like, I feel like I'm just finally like catching some wind and I'm ready to like, let's go now, and I'm like, oh, gosh, I'm. Finally, everything's working, and I wanted to just keep going, and now I feel like the brakes are starting to come on.
Wind down.
We have the drink scramble coming up, and that's kind of one of our biggest tournaments. Um, the Chamber is gonna have a tournament.
In September.
Yeah, so I have a couple, you know, events coming up that will still, I mean, youth, Seven Clans Casino, youth one that's coming out there. So.
That was usually really big.
Yeah, it's still, there's still potential for. Keep moving.
I think actually, the golf course probably does more business between the July and the August than it do the first of.
I think summer.
Use those tourists and families though, because a lot of them are bare enough for school and. All well.
Anything else for Misty?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And run to library.
I don't, I don't.
Are there any total numbers from, uh? Woodcarvers? Book sale?
I am.
I'm trying to unmute myself, girl. Um, actually, I would say, um. From what cat tally I've got right now, there's about a thousand dollars without tables costs, a little over a thousand. And I was surprised that I was gone, but, um, I think that's down from last year. But we made about three hundred on the baskets, which I also know is down a little bit. So I don't know, was the crowd down since I wasn't here?
It seemed a little slower this year.
Okay.
Be honest. For some of the other booths I, I thought I was at.
Okay.
I was busy, but it was still quite busy.
So, um, I did not go back since I wasn't feeling great and double-check what last year was, but, um. I'm going to do that because my feeling is, and so was Kelly when I talked to her, that it was down a little bit. Lot of work with all those books for maybe a net of nine hundred, so, but. We'll change that with the new building. Have a continuous sale. But she said they already had received some of the books back. People had read them already. It's like, oh, take them somewhere else. And I know I was recorded on that, but.
You just rent them.
Yeah. Can't you send them somewhere else? Give them to your friends. Anyway.
All right, so if there's nothing else, then.
Move on to me.
We'll move on to the administrator or. And. And that's gonna take the.
I'm just. Instantly here, and Miriam's here for one of the items, so I want to make sure that she and I can.
Okay.
Care over this. So, um, the first item I have that needs action is, uh, Resolution twenty-two seventeen max, this is. Um, was touched on at the work session, uh, for the police department with, uh, joint powers with the BCA and, um, criminal justice. So, um, I provided the resolution that the, um, state requires. The court data services, um, agreement, which I reviewed from our previous two thousand sixteen agreement, and the language has not changed. Um, the state of Minnesota joint powers agreement is an additional, um, document that also needs to be approved, and all three of those. The resolution will support all both of those, um, agreements if passed. Or in one motion. And then I'll forward this onto the state and make sure the county signs it too.
All right. Everyone has a chance to read the resolution, then, okay? So we need a motion to pass this.
Motion to pass twenty twenty-two seventeen.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Are there any further discussion on this? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. For none, resolution is passed.
Um, so real briefly, before I move on to item B, um, I just wanted to let the board members know that, um, as I stated, the work session. You'd have representatives here from greater than the G. Um, they had a major, um, turnover with their, um. Uh, office administrator. The day after we met at the work session, so Dave Hingle has requested that the, um. Their presence at the next meeting be pushed into, you know, a work session on the twenty-second, or I told him September sixth. Your work session on the twenty-second or I told him September sixth. Um, council meeting, so I'm still waiting to hear feedback from him. As to which of those dates work for him and the other board members from greater than the G. Um, I encouraged him to make it the work session to give them better amount of time to have more free. Discussion on what they'd like to help the city with and have good interaction, so I'm just waiting to hear back from them. Um, and then next up, I could move on to item B. Um, this is for council consideration and potential approval. Um, so. We sent the original, uh, letter to Brent Frenzel and Joe Would Think. To, um, incorporate a, a potential purchase agreement for the old Wells Fargo building. On the council provided, uh, me the authority to send this letter to Grant. And I received communication back from him on the August third. Um, I supplied that email to the board for review. Um, and he requested some, uh, revisions to that letter. Before we move forward with purchase agreement. And I subsequently sent that to Joe Langle. Because of some of the additional, um, requirements, I don't. You know, I've always been a little cautious about this financially, um, although, you know. Personally, I think this is a really good venture for us to go through with getting this building. I'm just very cautious on it. So I wanted to make sure we did our due diligence by getting the attorney involved and, and re-reviewing these requests, so. Um, Joe Langle will be available by phone if the council has any questions. He's traveling to another city. Based on, um, his email to me today. Um, just to read into the record, he also, um, gave me the revised language to this letter. Um, he said, with respect to the closing sections. It now states that customary closing costs shall be paid by the city. Um, instead of party splitting them, which is more typical of a purchase agreement. Um, this would result in additional costs to the city and he provided a rough estimate of those additional costs. Closing fees being potentially three hundred dollars. Um, title commitment fees. Which are normally paid by the seller, four hundred dollars, state deed tax normally also paid by the seller. Of four hundred dollars. And then property taxes. Um, these are normally prorated to the closing costs and the city would only pay for part of what's left out in twenty-two. The second half of those two parcels is six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, all of which would be paid by the city. Um, there are additional costs that the city would normally pay as the buyer, including rec- recording fees and title insurance. Each party may have their own legal fees. Then he states with respect to the contingencies, it now states the city must close within thirty days if the bank receives another offer higher than the city's offer. This means the city may have to buy this property before itself to sell, sell its own library. As for the transfer restriction, the city is agreeing never to sell the land to another bank or credit union. The bank obviously does not want its properties used by competition, which we know that that was an issue when Wells Fargo closed. Um, but he states this may be a problematic in the future if the city ever decides to sell the property. Um, as it, the building was obviously built to be a bank to begin with, right? Um, so if the council wishes to modify the terms. He has provided, um, that sample language in this document of which I printed out and highlighted in red. Um, and again, he would be available up until seven thirty, um, for any further questions. If the city chooses to approve. The revisions to this letter to send to Mr. Frenzel, I would out for a, a hold on that.
You've lost the, his request to never sell the existing bank building to another bank.
For competition inside the.
Where does it say that in the write?
So.
His email says the existing library.
His email does, but. Mr. Frenzel's. Email requests it. So the letter Ron states it on page two, under transfer restriction.
How, how do we get that? Cause I'm wondering, is this a misinterpretation where he said? The existing library building will not be sold to another bank or credit.
Yeah, I think that is.
So I thought that was, unfortunately I've lost you face wise, but, um. I thought that had to do with the existing library building, not the building that we'd be purchasing. It, you understand that it's the new building?
That's, that's how I think of it also. I'm wondering if that's a misinterpretation by our. We'll have some, we want to have some sort of agreement that the existing library building not be sold to another bank or credit.
Yeah, that's what it says.
And I think the ch- chances of another banker or credit union wanting that building earned is.
Uh, yeah, pretty nil.
I didn't think we'd be giving much up.
I see your point, Ron, and that is a possibility of a, of a knowledge gap between Mr. Langle and. And, and the way I sent the email from Mr. Frenzel, so yes, that is a potential.
I would check that out because.
I can touch on that.
We want to limit ourselves because that's a prime corner. I mean, let's say ten years from now. You want to get rid of the building or something?
Get rid of the library?
And get rid of the bank.
But if we first visit or library, that's what he was talking about, that we can't sell it in the future if we decide to get rid of it. I think that's what we're all committed, right?
That's what I understand. That's how I'm understanding it. I don't, I think. Ron and Tommy, if I'm misunderstanding you, that you agree you've got Mr. Frenzel's request of that our existing library right now on First Street should never be a bank.
Right.
Okay.
No.
That's the way it reads.
That's the way it reads. That, I mean, if we take it literally word for word.
Yes.
Which we have to.
Right.
Have to, right now, I don't know if that's how Deerwood intended, but.
I don't think, I agree with Miriam. I do not believe that was the intention of Deerwood. Is that the existing bank building that we are, would be purchasing to turn into the library would never become a bank.
Cause it was, it says problematic in future if the cities decide to sell the property.
That's, that's Mr. Reynolds, that's the attorney's concern and that's also his knowledge gap of not understanding.
Right.
How it historically has come to that. Because when Wells Fargo closed down, one of the restrictions they had on the sale was that it could not sell to another. judiciary. But Deerwood was still able to purchase it. So. Whether Deerwood doesn't want the competition in the future for either of those buildings, I would need to clarify.
So if we clarify that. Um. How about the other two areas of can, that they wanted to have restrictions in or change?
I have caution about the thirty days. Um. We may not be able to sell this building.
Let's.
Quickly, um. Depending upon if Deerwood puts the building up for sale or just gets another offer outright that is. Higher, that could put the city in a, in a deficit. Financially, if, um, the city chose to just go ahead and close before the other existing library building sold. Cause we still really don't know, even though, you know, we've had a local real estate agent say, so Miriam, we could get fifty thousand dollars for the. Building on First Street. If that truly would end up being the case, it might end up being thirty. And you'd still end up with a deficit.
We either way, we're gonna have a deficit.
We are, it's just how big is it gonna be done, right? How big is it gonna be? And what risk are we willing to, uh, are we willing to do for that future of, of that, um, venture?
And how much money have you got to put into that other building to potentially sell it?
I don't think you'll have to put any money into it. I mean, unless they want you to fix that door, but I. Put it on the market as I, otherwise we don't have any problems, do we?
Well, it's got a brand new air conditioner in it, so.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, the existing building, would we need to do anything to it to sell? No, probably not. Would that, or would that affect our asking price possibly? But anything we put into that building, we couldn't budget to put into the new one.
Right.
So obviously we're not in the stage of a purchase agreement anyway, which still, yeah, if, if the council agrees to this language. Um, then Deerwood would dropped up the purchase agreement and then the city council would still have to review and agree with the purchase agreement. Too. But at least this provides a stepping point again. For us to continue moving forward if the board chooses to.
I have a question. Why is there two hundred and seventy days?
As requested. Deerwood.
Yeah, I don't know. That's about nine months. I don't know if it worked out exactly equal when I did the math, but. I, I'm not real sure why.
They're willing to put, um. A timeline on it, Don, knowing the market.
Question is, are we willing to move any? Go further ahead this evening?
And, and you know that the library is hoping that you will go forward.
I would like to see it happen, so I'm gonna move to approve revision of the letter of intent. But she blacked out from the new with me.
I'm second.
Well.
A motion? And a second?
And my decision.
And this motion is to approve it as is agreeing to.
To revise the letter of intent.
Not sell that bank ever to another, that building ever to another bank?
Yeah, Ron is, Ron is asking for clarification on that transfer restriction language, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would prefer to get the clarification so that that line specifically states. Which building.
The existing.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's revise it that way.
Yeah.
If he's typed his email wrong, then he can, you know, somebody can come back and say, no, I meant.
You're right. Good point.
But I think that's, my opinion's a misinterpretation, so. If, if motion is to proceed to that way, revise in the language.
Okay, and to clarify. The language on the transfer restriction would note what address?
Yes. The existing library building at.
First Street, on First Street.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Let that. Change with that. Remove moving forward.
Yep.
Is there anything else? I need further discussion. I think I'd like to see this show up at the work session.
Okay.
Also.
Uh.
I just want to keep.
In what format? Just the, the conversation itself?
Just the conversation itself.
Hopefully I'll get some feedback from Mr. Frenzel by then.
Okay, and. I think that if there's other folks that. Have an opinion on things, that they should be able to voice that opinion. I mean, I realize we probably have. We used to go, but if we could. More info we have, the better, is what I'm saying from everyone.
What other info would you like from the library next?
It's not from the library, Miriam, but I'm necessarily concerned with the information on, I, I see the benefits. I, I, I understand the position we're all in. I want to make sure that we're hearing from. The rest of the public, if there is some member of the public that wants to have, share their thoughts on it.
Okay.
You know, whether they're for it, whether they're against it, whether I, we just need to know. That would be my only thing, so with that, we still have the motion on the table, so. All those in favor?
I, I.
I. I. Opposed. These revisions. Are passed.
Okay. Um, moving forward, I have some dates of importance. Um, the next development for a meeting is Wednesday, August tenth at eleven o'clock in the morning at City Hall. Um, the next two, uh, public works, public safety facility construction meetings, um, please note the updates. Um, there was a change to our woodset partners availability due to, um, loss of family members, so our. Um, original dates of this Thursday's construction meeting is being moved to Friday morning, the twelfth, same time. Also here, thank you for showing up last time, um, appreciate that. Um, and then the subsequent would be two weeks later on the twenty-fifth. Both here at ten thirty. Um, August eleventh and twenty-fifth at two P M, we're having finance committee meetings. That includes Nick. Myself and Mike. Um, August eighteenth is the Black Duck ambulance board meeting here at nine thirty. I also got late, um, notification that also on the eighteenth at nine A M down at the Beltran County Emergency Response, um, meeting. Location is the FEMA, um, meeting, so I have a little bit of. A board meeting. A board member of the ambulance board have to go in for myself at the, on the eighteen ambulance board meeting, so I can attend that because we're only having one of those facilitation meetings. For the FEMA, um, money and I have to attend that unless I can find somebody else to go on my behalf. I'll work that out.
I think. Okay.
I'll work that out.
I, I don't have to take minutes doing.
With all due respect, I personally would like to be at the county meeting with FEMA. Um, because I drafted the request for funds.
Yes.
Um, the ambulance board, I think, can handle. Meeting without me. So, um, and there's a, you know, Morgan style, the Northones of V P, so she can come in too.
They're not.
Unless of course we push it off, so. Um, moving forward, August twenty-second would be our work session and the public hearing for the city land combination. Um, side note on the demo project, it's, um, getting very close. Uh, I think J D Construction will be in town tomorrow to start pouring foundation for the theater wall. Um, and I had a visitor today from, uh, a new local. Plumbing business that was interested in purchasing the property and wants to be part of any. Potential sale con- conversation, so.
That is good.
Yeah, um, it's exciting, so we'll. Very infantate, infant stage, so we'll.
We have a former back in town again.
Pardon me?
We'd have a former back.
No, I don't know. I'm not even sure where he's from. I got posted, that's as far as I got to it, five minutes of conversation today. Um. Uh, September fifth is Labor Day, so, uh, city called, called that day and I was responsible the day. So Tuesday, September sixth. First is cool. September regular council meeting. That's everything I'm doing. If I have any questions on that. But so election, uh, dates. Um, tomorrow's the primary. Um, I feel quite a number of. Questions and concerns from people that, um, want to know if we have. Municipal primary, municipal school board election and all that, that's pretty common. Um, polls open at seven A M tomorrow, they close at eight P M, so we'll be here from six A M until whenever we get done. Um. And then on, um. The sixteenth is when filing for local offices closes at five P M that date, so we have already had, um, councilman. Uh, Ron Frederson and member Lori Hamilton filed for their own seats going forward, so thank you very much. I haven't had anybody else file, so, so far they're unopposed. Um, the mayor seat is still needing filing, so we have a week for that to still be done. And, and, and.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just letting people stew.
Yeah, I'm sure. Um.
Dramatic. Last minute entry.
And then when the primary is done, we move into, um, you know, general election, uh, deadlines, so, um. As I spoke at the work session, we all know the twenty-second is basically our, our deadline to the twenty-fourth of when we can get our local sales tax approved and. And get that on the ballot, um, for the general election, so I'm still kind of crossing my fingers and my toes that. Um, the legislature will go back in and do a bill. So we can get that on our ballot in November. But September twenty-third is when absentee ballots are gonna be ready. This, the county will have that ready for the general election at that point, so if you are. Voting absentee or you're a mail ballot township or city, you can, you'll be able to start getting those in September. Um, and then voter registration, pre-registration closes on October eighteenth, that's just a couple of weeks away from the general election. I will be. I will be completing uh, healthcare facility voting, absentee voting the Tuesday prior to the general election, which is November first. Um, based on the amount of voting I had in the primary, um, I think there was maybe a dozen votes between Good Sound um, Serenity and um, the assisted living of Good Sound that registered for absentee voting, but only six people voted. I still think that this general election will be very healthy attained. I just uh, um, voted on. I just don't think the primary is going to be primaries. I was confused everybody. Anyway, they're always looking for a local election, um, not see in federal. And then, of course, number eight is the general election and sometime then will be open between seven and eight. Questions on the election coming up? When it is? You have any questions about what you're gonna vote for? I have had a sample ballot in front of people's desk. And remember, when you vote, you can only vote by party. And on the page two is your uh, Beltrane Sheriff's um, race. So it has to be a
Best tomorrow.
I was gonna say, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, do you have a sample ballot there?
It'll be small.
Picture. While I download it.
Um, uh, November fourteenth will be the um, the date that our city will do our canvassing after a general election too. If you're not familiar with the canvassing meeting, what that is, is um, that provides um, the city council to actually review all the um, the summaries of the ballots and agree to how the voting came out and basically um, certify it at that point. So hopefully we won't have any um, they, you know, competitive races, because that usually makes it difficult. As we have people uh, file for the seeds, there won't be as many write-ins as we've had in the past. You know?
I
I'm done.
You're done?
I'm done.
Okay. Anything from the council? I think everybody's touched on. We got a lot going on in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, I'm I'm sure I've forgotten one of them things too.
I I'm sure we probably are. I mean, big scramble, backwards bash. Another grow and chill. Pass that. I was going pretty well.
You guys had a great vote. Always nice to see the phone numbers on a great vote.
Yeah, what's kind of fun.
Yes.
Is that maybe the board or board members and uh, the committee people?
I'm already in.
Alright, well, if that's it, then.
Motion to adjourn?
Let's look at that.
There we go. All favor?
Aye.
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 You stand there. Our earlier conversation, Shonda.